Good evening. This is the August 12, 2025, open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees being held via hybrid format, allowing for remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. For trustees, K.K. Hill.
Here.
Airheart Gray.
Here.
J.F. Alkov not here. Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Megan Small.
Yeah.
Joshua Small.
Here.
And me, Rob Pettit. And for library staff, we have library director, Robert McLean.
Here.
Program specialist, Gail and Dennis. Oh, no. Okay. Reporting secretary, Faith Chrisley.
Here.
And we've got Danielle here as well. Yeah. The meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 P.M. on September 9, 2025. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:02 P.M. For public comments, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of 10 minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. While board will take public comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity to discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. Turning to the agenda, I would turn to the minutes of the July 8, 2025 meeting. Prior to discussion, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 12, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
All right, I'll do a roll call. K.K. Hill. Or sorry, discussion. Always do that. So let's open that up to discussion for the minutes from the July meeting.
I have one thing. It's on page six at the top during my comments about the Library Foundation of Needham meeting. I actually became a voting member that same meeting. Just saying, Airheart became a voting member during the meeting.
I have something when you're ready.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Kay.
Okay. On page four, number six, old business, there's a first sentence says, "Kay..." Oops, who was that? "Kay presented the streamlined onboarding doc." I didn't do that, though. I didn't present the onboarding doc, but I did, and we could, if we wanted to strike that sentence altogether, what I did was pass out an edited introductory paragraph.
Great. Thank you, Kay.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you have any further comments to the July minutes? Hearing none, I'll make a roll call of votes. Kay?
Hi.
Airheart?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Megan?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Myself, I. To the next agenda item, we have an update on the teen room renovation and expansion. We've got Hank Happ and Ken Sargent here today to discuss that, so I'll turn it over to them and to Rob.
Thank you. Now, thanks that Hank is the director of the Building Design and Construction Department, and Ken Sargent is the person who's gonna save our butts dozens of times over the next six months. He's our owner's project manager, so he'll be our middleman, making sure the project stays on course and there aren't any issues. And they're here just at your invitation to give you an update about the project as we approach September 2nd, when onsite construction starts three weeks from today. I'll turn it over to.
As Rob said, we... Good evening, everybody. Nice to be here. As Rob said, we start September 2nd. We've actually started a little bit already. We've moved the shelves and demolished many of the shelves that had taken out of the current area for the teen and tween area. Past couple days, they've been taking care of that. We've cut that up and be ready and raring to go on the second. One of the first items being done will be the creation of the wall around the area, the dust wall, sound wall, whatever you want to call it, but that will enclose the area. We'll be doing some selective demolition at the beginning, but once that wall is installed, then the demolition can start in earnest. There's not a whole heck of a lot. I mean, the carpet comes up, some of the flooring comes up, the air handling unit comes out of the ceiling, some of the ceilings come down, but it's not too, too long. We're hoping to do it in a week, but the first week is short. I've arranged with the church to have dumpsters put in the front lot, one for general demolition and the other for metals, which the town will supply us, as they did for the metals out of the bookshelves, which they cut it out today. So again, we're starting on the 2nd of September. We hope to finish the middle to end of February. I will share my screen with you for a quick look at the schedule, but it is very, very difficult to read, so. It... Let's see what happens here. No, that's not it. Let's try this again.
I can pull it up if need be.
I got it. I just grabbed the wrong... I just pushed on the wrong one. All right, so as you can see, the... Some of the milestone dates, which is at the top of the screen there, I'll scroll over. We're looking at... I'm gonna minimize the people so I can see it. Looking, like I said, mid to late Sept... Excuse me, mid to late... No, I'll get the month right. February for our Stupido occupancy, final completion, substantial completion. We've got some other dates along the way, but again, it'll flow fairly quickly. Late half of February, we'll be moving the furniture in. We're in the process of submittals now. We've got... Many of the submittals, the fabrics have been picked for the... Why isn't... It said it's been paused. Why has it been paused? I don't know. Technological difficulties here. User error, probably.
Ken, I did download one from the ProCore site. I could share that.
There we go. I got it. Can you see that now? Anyone see that?
Yes. Yeah, we can see the trend. We can see the blue trend.
It's like I said, it's tough to read. It's tough to read even on my computer, even 18 and a half by 11. It's tough to read, but that just gives you a flavor of where we're going and how we're doing it. Like I said, submittals are in process. The... Picked the fabrics last week, so we should be good to go, and I'll take questions if anyone has them.
Ken, I should also mention that the new shelving, we've received a quote. We're proceeding with that order because it'll be... It's one of the longer lead items, but it should be all ready to go by the time the contractor has completed his work. Also, Rob, you asked the architect to print out the plan and a few of the renderings that could be hung on the wall so that patrons would understand what's coming. And we may have the contractor create a banner of some sort that introduces the construction team, gives them a little bit of advertising, but we'll discuss that at our next project meeting with them. I think that was all I had.
Question?
Hey.
Yep. Day.
Yeah, just that schedule looks great. Is it possible for us to get a copy of that document, just so we can kind of follow along? It's hard to see, you know, on the screen.
Right. Sure, I'll get it to Rob, and then he can distribute it to the committee.
Great. Thank you.
Do you guys see... Do you guys see any delays or any potential delays? I know you said you're bidding out, like, the furniture right now is because of tariffs causing delays in shipping and stuff like that, not the cost of the tariffs.
The usual question at this point in time. No, we don't, but right now, some of the stuff, you know, we're just going through approvals now, so many of the items have not been ordered yet, but the contractor is concentrating on some of the longer lead time items to get those upfront. I think the longest one that I've heard is 10 weeks, so if he gets that in by the end of, even the end of September, we'll be... We should be fine. But you never know. Tariffs could change tomorrow, and we're up a creek without a paddle, so.
Yeah, I feel good that we got the shelving on order because that potentially could be a long lead item.
And one question I had was, you know, I know that the bulk of the construction will be happening probably during the fall and maybe early winter. You'd mentioned, Ken, that, you know, the air handlers coming out during this. Will the heating function of the upstairs be significantly impacted, do we think, or?
No, no, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. What's in there now is really more just an air handler. It's not an HVAC unit, so plenty of heat for... Still plenty of heat for the winter.
And that corner of the library has tons of solar heating anyway, just from the windows, so.
That's very true.
That's too much.
Actually, the construction workers may be cursing the heat as they're working, but no, we should be fine. There should be no impact on that.
Got it. Thanks.
Their working hours will be early. You're thinking start at 6:00 A.M., Ken?
Yeah, 6:30. It's gonna be 6:30 to roughly 2:00. The idea is, especially during the demo phase, to do the demo first thing in the morning, build up a stockpile of materials, then the next morning at 6:30, they'll be able to truck it out through the front door to the dumpsters in the lot next door and continue on with the demo and go through that cycle for a week, week and a half. So all that, the heavy noisy work will be done before the patrons start coming in at 9:00.
Can I ask a question about how that affects staff in the morning? You know, do we... Are our library staff gonna need to be on site during hours, or is that all handled?
I'll be there. I'll be opening up for them every day.
Got it. Got it. So library staff can maintain their usual hours for the most part?
Yeah, and we have like students at 6:30.
And question, just when the teens... When school starts and the teens start arriving, they'll be directed to what part of the library?
Well, we... There are a couple spaces, you know, anywhere in the library.
Yeah.
As any occasion, the Bosworth Room has the teen graphic novel collection in it and will be set up as a small teen room and study space for them. In addition to the community room, will be set up every afternoon, Monday through Thursday and Fridays as a space where teens come in and study individually or.
Thank you.
My question was, are eventually are we gonna get like something of a final design so we can look as it is progressing? I know that there'll be pictures hanging up, but can we, as a board, get that same kind of thing? Just so... I'm just so excited that it is gonna be starting, but I just would really would mind knowing what we're... What our final... Somewhat what the final will start to look like.
Hank, was that the... Hank, was that the intent of what you asked Nicole and Uteel to prepare?
Certainly. Well, the images are their renderings that the board, the trustees have already seen in some of the earlier presentations, but the public probably hasn't seen. And they'll be mounted on, I guess, foam core boards, maybe 18 by 24, roughly. So they'll be visible, and also it'll have the proposed plan, which you all have seen in prior presentations. So between the plan and the renderings, I think you'll get a pretty good idea of... Or the patrons will be able to go on over to that wall and see for themselves what it'll look like.
I know that, you know, as this starts and progresses, there will probably be a lot of social media and, you know, local media and a lot of community outreach, and those renderings might be a good resource for that as well, so people understand what's going on.
And I'll share them with the board.
And Rob, have you already shared the prior presentations? Maybe there'd be a pared down one that we could ask them to do that you could post on your website.
Right.
Because we saw a lot of different ideas, and then we weren't sure what the final ideas were. We saw many variations of that, but what has been just like locked in, it'd be good to know, just so that when we are approached out from people at the public, we won't look too crazy. We'll have a somewhat of a succinct idea of what it is that we're talking about, what it might potentially look like.
Have we ordered ribbon and big scissors? Okay. You never know.
Probably one big scissors factory. So do we have any other questions for Hank and Ken? All right. Well, thanks to you both for joining us, and I really appreciate the update. That certainly helps us as people start to ask questions as they see the work start. So thanks again, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, have a good one.
Bye-bye.
Right, so I'll turn it over to Rob for the director's reports.
Thank you. I'll start with some department updates from July. Children's Room, 1,000 and 56-plus kids signed up for the summer reading program, which is amazing. I think the theme of the dragons and the dragon cards are one to level up the game thing that's really taken hold. And that's fun. The best part is the reading, not so much the games and the card collection, but.
Grabbed some dragon theme books. My son got all the cards, like, quickly. He's reading very much. So the other side is a little slower, but yeah.
Me and the kids have already read themselves to the moon and back, and are heading back to the moon again.
Nice.
Yep, and the schools are in the dead heat competition every week. It changes as to which school is in bleed, so that's probably be down to the last second, probably August 18th when it ends. So that has been great, and thank you to the friends, their support of the summer reading program prizes and programming. It's been a big hit. See, the next bullet, we had Trevor, the games man, with 92 people attend. So it's been a great turnout for children's programs this summer. If you haven't joined us at Splash Storytime tomorrow morning at 9:30, it's gonna be hot, so come on over to the splash pad at the pool, and Paul will be there. The last one a week ago was pirate themed, so she was in costume reading pirates and, or they picture books, two kids are doing finger play activities. There were about 40 people again turning out.
Sounds like we're getting a lot of good data for updates. We're getting so many of these programs that will factor into our size. Like, the children, yeah.
Yes, yes, and just after, for us to continue our pace.
Yeah, I'm so happy to hear about the increased attendance. That's really great.
It's really good. A stumpy is a stuffed animal. And we have overnight sleepovers with studies. And Gina, who works in the children's department, ran one again this year, had fantastic photographs. I'll share with trustees of all the great activities the stuffies were up to in the library. So that was great. She puts a lot of work into it, and the kids really appreciated. And as noted here, a week afterwards, a kid asked if his stuffed animal is one at the card game. That was depicted in one of the photographs, so it really captures the imagination of the kids, so that's funny. The bullet here is just, we're getting some really appreciative comments from patrons. I just wanted to share those, you know, doing some great work here, bringing great performers who are really connecting with the kids, and parents and carriers really appreciate that, I guess, us know that, so. Yeah. Also, we had a nice surprise. A month ago, the Needham Rotary Club reached out and donated by wristbands for re-admission to the carnival. So Wendy put together a jar guessing contest to distribute those, and we had 97 entries from kids, and those were distributed to very exciting kids who got to go to the carnival. And moving on to technical services, the second bullet, this is really exciting, and we're encouraging staff to think of how their interests may match up with the needs of patrons here in Needham. So Tamara, who runs the technical services department, has taken the lead in reaching out to community partners to put together a memory cafe, start here at the end of September. So she's working with Karen from the circulation department and Wayne from the reference department, as well as council on aging and youth and family services here to put together a memory cafe for people suffering. We're dealing with Alzheimer's, you mentioned, and caregivers to come here once a month to talk and listen and share, a place to go within the community and connect with others who are going through the same thing. So that is a really nice outreach. Each month there is, so there's a person who will be coming here and leaving it, or it'll be a topic. Yeah, so the fourth Tuesday of every month here, the third Tuesday, there's one being held at the cap. So this is... We plan ours so that regionally, if you're with Needham, it doesn't overlap with any other ones being offered. So it's a nice collaboration amongst institutions here in Needham to bring this to months. Technology and Archives, the second one with Danielle has replaced all the catalog copies and the adult nonfiction and fiction stacks. They're much smaller, and so they allow us to provide people more personal space to put their stack of books or their bags as they search the hard catalog, the online card catalog. Moving on to circulation, the two bullets here, circulation as well as technical services, in July finished up movement collections on the first floor, or... There's still movement collections, but a big part of it has been the interfiling of science fiction mysteries into adult fiction, and then moving that forward so you can move large print off of the walls to the back of adult fiction so that we could move physical A.B. onto the walls. And then the shelving movement that occurred Monday, Tuesday of this week will allow us to now bring large collection forward onto that new shelf. Once that happens, we'll be able to elongate the adult fiction, not use the top shelf or the bottom shelf, and be in stat browsing as you see that's nonfiction to make the collection more accessible. So circulation's been fantastic in leading off those projects, and so there's more to do, but what we needed to get done before September 2nd has been completed. So really excited about that, all the work that circulation's, well, it's reference and technical services did, reading and moving collections around. Yeah, congratulations to all staff on that. It's huge. Yeah, it's heavy lifts. Yes.
That space is amazing, just how big and open it is that those shelves are gone. You can look from... You come through the front door, you can actually see this room here. You can actually see it when you get to the computers, it's just like, wow.
So those five shelving minutes that were there are now on the first floor here. The A.B. shelving has been recycled, but that shield's over here, and it's gone to be recycled. So the other shelving that's up there, that's not the shelving nearest the study room, will be demoed on September 2nd, that'll be our first initial work that we do to clear up that space before they construct the construction. Moving on to personnel, we continue to knock it apart by staff getting scholarships, lots of free money for conferences. So Mass Library System has continued into FY '26, their support of librarians going to conferences. So in July, five of us applied, and we all got our scholarships. So this is amounts to approximately $6,500 worth of expenses being covered by NLS. It's great. Last year, we had well over $12,000 covered, so this is nice in addition to the money set aside by trustees and library state aid, given our budget is small. Membership reinforcements, but that is fantastic. So four of us are going to the annual conference in October of the Movement Library Association, and Danielle Tao is going to virtual conference called Inter核. Also, right now, today, this week, Jackie Bacon, our reference librarian, digital media specialist, is at Digital Looza, which is overdrives by annual conference for its partners. So she's there learning how to maximize what we do in overdrive and patent licenses and all the secrets and tips so that we can really make some investments and market opportunities for. We have a new senior custodian, so Jeff Lara, it's higher than his first day this last Monday, August 4th. It's the senior custodian now for the library, being our parole at Angel Cat, Jeff. As we get to our senior custodians since Angel retired, so we're excited to have him on board. Moving on to teen room expansion renovation, we shared an FAQ with patrons. So that is at each service desk. It's also on the website. We'll be sending an email out to all patrons this week with a link to it, putting on social media, part of the news. Next week, there is no edition this week due to the vacation. Next week's edition, and meeting with some of our regular patrons who we see on a daily basis here for the next couple of weeks, just to have one-on-one conversations. Meeting with some of our regular patrons who we see on a daily basis here for the next couple of weeks, just to have one-on-one conversations about the project. To minimize impacts on the use of the second floor.
One question, Rob. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Does anybody, in terms of like the FAQs and stuff like that, has anybody reached out to or has heard from the observer by any chance? Because you might need more than need an observer that's like the.
Yeah. Yeah, no one's reached out to me, but Bill's certainly reached out to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. About the projects.
Right, maybe like if they can get it for like this September 2nd start date or something like that.
Yeah, we'll be doing that too.
Yeah, happy, I know a few folks there, happy to touch her. Or you probably have a super cute word.
Yeah. And then you have children too.
I was wondering for the FAQs, this wouldn't work for a black and white printed version, but would it make sense to include some of those renders like at the bottom or something or at the top?
Yeah, so, yes, absolutely. So this FAQ is like working documents. So as we hear other questions or concerns, we'll be changing up and as soon as we have the reference.
Yeah. Because that'll especially, it may not answer your questions, but it provides some context.
Yes, it's a lot of money and a lot of disruption. So it's nice to show what the final. Final will look like. You know, it's been our life. Everybody's life. In this room for a year plus or many years, but I'm sure a lot of patrons have no idea what's going on. And they're probably very surprised to see a big empty space upstairs right now and things moving around. So we have a lot of work to to reach out to many people. For September 2nd, we didn't even have to just to educate. And I think the renderings and the filter itself will reassure people that. It's it's worth a temporary. Services. So we did have Amy House in front of the time management office with the FAQ and giving some great feedback. So that was very helpful. That is. I talked about the first and second. First floor movement of collections continues. We have to adjust some shelving before we press the DVDs onto this wall. And then when we do August 24th, today, the adult graphic novel collection came downstairs and was where the large print, new large print. Collection was, owned by Lucky Day Collection. When we do adjust things, the Lucky Day Collection is going to move to the most prominent position in the library. That very front-facing shelving unit facing the seating, the soft seating. We'll have an expanded section so we can leave things in the new. Section for longer than we do now. Rousing opportunities that are more inviting. So we're looking forward to continuing to move everything around and hopefully the end result will be a. Much more exciting collection and easier to find collection. That's certainly what has been the past few months. From.
If we're into making a great, but it really is. See things in libraries, things upstairs, stairs sprayed and over here.
Yeah.
See all of the, all the changes and really making a big impact.
And Tamara Dalton, head of technical services, has really taken a lead on a lot of it. So. And she's up pretty strongly. It's it's really exciting. You know, to to take the two-room renovation. Hope to also make some other. Before we get to basically. So. And touched on dumpsters. So in relation to not so much the two-room expansion, but. We will receive confirmation probably on Thursday morning that the church agrees that an overway of the front parking lot can occur on Monday. Next week. So. When that. Event occurs, we'll be telling all of our staff and patrons that next Monday, Tuesday, and possibly Wednesday. That we have on the street. And not not be available for use. And our field house parking lot will be to be used. These days, it will only occur, it's striking will occur the next day, depending on whether it could be three days, but both days, just two days. We cannot refer it to the upper retirement parking lot because of the. What will it be? It is needed and well-used by those. So this is occurring because the tenure lease is on December 31st and part of the lease says the town has to do this with your leases on. End. So. Contract from the town has. Last week, this week or next week, we'll delay two times, make it fitting to extend them. So it is coming upon us on like suddenly. And we're working hard to. Over that appropriate, depending, which is be the two days. So. Just a heads up. So no one knows about this yet, but it's been confirmed that church has to be able to take this to happen. I'm sure it will happen, but there's. So. As soon as that event's. So that's not so much of a two-room expansion, but. One concern is would the dumpsters for the demo. Be put there in early September? So they may have to. So that they don't. So. They will be there probably for a week, maximum of two weeks, but over the. So that was a concern. So we'll see some maps to address. Potential for damage to the. And then a new tenure lease is being worked upon, worked on. So that's that's a work. There's a meeting is about. So staff are getting really excited that in three weeks, this is. You know, so. So I talked to Aaron or Liam. They are almost electric, but they're enthusiastic for what is to come. It'll be very interesting. We have a meeting tomorrow to talk about programming for. Teams during this project. So Aaron's been doing a lot of good work this summer to plan. Operator.
It ain't funny for team programming. Thank you for that reminder to speak up. Sorry, Kay, if you could hear me. So, yeah, really excited, but we're also. Ready for the unknowable, unexpected things that are going to come our way. So. Part of that is headspace. The self-pure app that we've just purchased this week and be rolling out to staff this week. So that. Some of this unexpected stuff may bring. And expected stuff may bring stress to our staff. So we just want to make sure. We're doing what we can to help address that. Um, moving on. Other questions? The financial report, silver. Budget report for FY26 is attached. Not much activity, except you'll see that. Holy moly, we've already spent half of our expense money. What's going on? It's only been August. But that's typical and that is our minimum membership fee. Also, with the books pair, it goes out of use of databases. We have some of those annual renewals where that fourteen point eight percent may seem high, but. It was a one-time cost that we've taken care of early in the fiscal year.
Just that why I talk about budgets are FY27 operating budget request is due on October 24th. So we have a meeting tomorrow at noon, well, a budget-related meeting. But we're already thinking about that request.
This is a question about salary number.
Yes.
I mean, it should be eight point something percent, but it should be one twelve. I'm not sure exactly. Why is the salary number five percent?
Yeah. This July 31st. 31st was a Thursday. This may not have included. The. Eight day period that had just. Friday, so.
It's just the time of the day period is.
Yeah, also. Jen is on the, and so she left. Before the end of July and the end of these reports, so. It's probably not picking up that final. Period. But we are fully staffed. Just a reminder that. Summertime, you know, is a time for vacation and time off and seventy percent of our staff are part-time and when we do take breaks. They don't get paid. So we have them budgeted to work all year long. So there will be some. Muddies left. We've got to go. Library state aid report. This is the final report of FY25 that includes the last three expenditures from that. Let's see that we spent just under fifty seven thousand dollars. What we had planned. FY25. And now moving forward, we. Spending against the FY26 plan that was approved by trustees last month. The trust fund report just has a couple of expenditures. And donations, I guess, is part of the list of gifts. The current donation fund. Victims on track there. For selectors who buy the books and materials from the library. This summer so far, we've been using money from the friends to continue selecting and now that spending will be complete. On August 16th and then we'll transition to spending some trust fund money. Into the upper budget. So that trust fund. Spend will pick up.
I was curious about that because usually we we hit the trust funds in summer to get this July purchases.
Yeah, so we start out with the friends, the trust fund money. We do have, as you know, some invoices waiting for the next meeting of the trust fund commission. So there are more in the queue and will will be more the next September meeting. But our invoices for trust funds need to go to the commission to be approved before they can be paid. And so. There's a little bit of delay there. Whereas the friends money, they've given us that money. So we're just. This is just. Statistical reports are listed here for D I D occurrences on our collection, where we've added to the collection. In, I'm sorry, in. July, it says May, two thousand twenty five. It's actually July and then. New and withdrawn item summary report. I did check with Tamara on the numbers in June and the numbers in July and the withdrawn that are the same exact. And she went and she double-checked the numbers and they are. Same numbers. And as she said, we should. Have played a lottery ticket that that day. I didn't. I don't think Tamara did because she's still working there. But. We've done a lot of reading to prepare for phase one. See here. So that sort of will. Settle down.
It seems like a lot of the reading is around young adult fiction graphic novels.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? And then for Rob, for the. June statistics.
Oh, yeah.
What would be those in September meeting?
The June statistics report, that's in Arizona, so I didn't want to share it with you. So we'll clean those up and get that as well as July to. What is in this report at the end on page seventeen of the trustees review of FY25 action plan? Is our our stats for this year. And when we get to that, I'd like to point out some numbers that are interesting. But yes, we got some issues with that report. So that's that's not here.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Rob, for the directors report. Any questions, discussion on that? And then to new business. The first action item is to vote to accept the gift list. We have the gift list in the packet that Rob circulated. Before discussing, do you have a motion to accept the gift list?
Second.
Right, any discussion on gift lists? Right, hearing.
Well, I just want to thank the Hunter charitable fund and and. And donation is directed towards large purchases. So we'll be making sure to use that money this fall. I'm the new large selector from library. So.
Thank you for for those gifts. So I'll move it up to a roll call vote. Okay. Sorry, it was unmuted. It looked like an affirmative gesture, but. I'm duty bound.
Unmute myself. Hi.
Perfect, thanks. Airheart, hi. Michael, hi. Megan.
Hi.
Josh.
Hi.
And myself, hi. So we can move on to the next item under new business, which is a vote to approve the revised arts and exhibits policy. Before handing it over to Kay and Rob, do we have a motion to approve that?
So.
Right, so we'll open up discussion to Kay and Rob for that policy.
If it gets, sorry, Kay, I just want to let trustees know that the revised draft that was in the packet included the. Correction from the last meeting where. Paragraph that begins to be as equitable as possible with limited space and great demand. That that end of that sentence, that says, "Bored as determined by the board of library trustees," which was a suggestion to allow. The trustees to. Grant somebody to display more than once in two years. So that's been included here. What also is here as a separate attachment was the internal procedures. A lot of this was in the original policy and as we've done with other revised policies where we sort of stripped out. Staff-focused internal procedures. We just wanted the trustees to see that document to know that this is something that. They, under this case, will still be working through, that they have not. And those procedures can be. Changed and improved over time without. Our committee of trustees having to do those changes.
Yes, we, the committee, agreed that the procedures, I mean, these are really how more more management and administrative things that the staff handles. that the staff handles and how they want to handle it or what schedule really is up to them and their work with the artists. So that was that was fine with us. We really wanted to address more what the policy and vision of the art committee is. And it is basically, it is a subcommittee of the trustees. So it gives the trustees the power to choose committee members and the power to vote on every artist we display. That's the main purpose.
I have, I have one question, which is about the way that we frame the membership of the subcommittee. I know this is referring to Gayle. But we have the definite article of the reference librarian slash programming specialist. Is that, is that a title that will persist?
Can you say what page you're on? Where are you?
I'm looking under the list of folks that are the members of the library art.
Okay.
Of committee. And the third bullet, then, it says, "The reference librarian slash programming specialist." So I was just curious, is that, is that a title that will persist on Gayle?
Gayle's official title.
Right.
That's her title.
So that, and so when, when someone else needs to fill that role, that will be the person's title.
Right.
Yes. That's why I just want to make sure that we're writing a policy that's specific to who is like the the title and not the person.
Right.
So part of that person's job, the reference librarian slash programming specialist, includes this.
Yeah, the job description.
Oh, got it, right. And that's a persisting position.
That's my understanding, yes, Rob would would verify that. But yes, that's the title, the name, that's the official title of that position.
Yeah, right. Right, so this this particular duty follows that position.
Yes, actually.
Verified. Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Because that's also in the, like.
Question.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember if it's a little library-directed job description, but I'm happy to be able to talk to the committee. Well, I think it's a designation, right?
It does say designation.
No, no, I, no, it's all, it's all mine. I love it.
Yeah, that's nice that Rob comes. In the past, we had a designee come. So this is great that Rob's interest, very much interested in the arts, and we appreciate that.
It's also, I think, as important, the community connection, you know, and hearing, working through all that. You know, the different groups and organizations and people out there needing to reach out to.
Right.
Any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none, we've already had a motion made and seconded, so I will move to a roll call vote. Kay?
Hi.
Hi, Michael. Hi, Megan.
Hi.
Josh.
Hi.
And myself, hi. Moving on to the last item under new business, we've got a discussion, but not vote, of a new draft of the teen room policy. So I'll hand it over to Michael and Rob for that.
Before we, if I could just jump in quickly, in the last trustees' meeting, I said that we also would be sharing a draft of the children's room policy at this meeting. It's not there. It's not ready yet, so. You probably saw that. It's been, we don't want to rush that. It's been a busy time for Paula and her crew and phase one of all, so that's it. But moving on to the draft of the teen room policy, Michael joined us last week. We had a nice, we need to go over the draft and make lots of edits to it. One thing we are working on that we will share with trustees are these internal procedures. You know, that make some libraries, like room rules or something like that. We will have internal procedures for staff and then sort of room rules, if you, if I may, that will communicate to our teen patrons about respecting the space and what's allowed in the space and what's not allowed in the space. But all of our other policies apply to behavior and expectations. Those are put here at the end. So this policy is less about what you can and cannot do in the space, but sort of when it's open, who's allowed to be in it. But we will, Erin, Liam, and us are developing internal procedures, which we will bring to the trustees this fall. Early but to.
Can I ask a question about that? Was any of the work that was done with the teen advisory group before it was disbanded, talking about this kind of shared governance? Because, because I think often those room rules are most successful when they're developed, like constituency.
Yes, yeah, so we have, I'm sorry, work on it.
Okay.
But that'll be part of the fun in this room, the afternoon.
Okay, great.
Matthew and Erin are here talking through the room rules or whatever we call it. Yeah, so we need acceptance by them. And so their participation in creating that is key for success with that.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I just want to make sure there's going to be some sort of disciplinary process.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, not just old people like me saying, yeah, here are your rules. Exactly, yeah.
I thought that it was real productive, because what was happening, and I think we came to a general consensus, is that we weren't rewriting. We were just extending on existing policies so that there was just an inclusion of this versus trying to create a whole new kind of a policy where it might have been more confusing and less, less helpful. But I was glad that that was the approach that we sat down and brainstormed it. Really just tried to streamline that idea of the room rules and in conjunction with existing policies that go throughout the whole library. So it wasn't like reinventing something, it was adding to it. So I thought it was very productive.
One question I've got, you know, we define teens as grade seven through 12. And sometimes we also refer to this as the teen and tween space. That question, well, should we think about expanding the definition of ages? And I know that, you know, anybody can actively browse the collection, but for actually using the space where a lot of people, you know, certainly in sixth grade are considered middle schoolers, should should they kind of be part of that demographic?
I was going to ask the same, but I think all of us were asked that same question.
Yeah, I also had that question.
So my short answer is no.
The other reason, the town is moving towards maybe if we decide some three hundred something million dollars, having middle school be six through eight. And if this policy is seven to eight, then you're going to.
Yeah.
And they're in the same school as some of their peers.
Right. This is a teen room renovation of existing and newly built space. And what you see in lots of public libraries, it's very hard to attract teenagers to a public library. And one thing that librarians tend to do, because they aren't successful in doing that, is to expand their reach, bring in non-teens, which then exacerbates the problem and makes the space not really welcoming for ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders, because there's sixth graders in there. So phase two luckily is right, right on this, following this project. And I think that's a great opportunity to create a more welcoming space for older kids.
I think, you know, part of this might be, I don't think many kids are actually reading this policy going in. And we're, and we're not checking IDs, but, you know, I'm assuming that, you know, if a tween wants to use that room, you know, they're not going to be asked to be.
Also, like, using the room.
Like to use the craft area, for example. Like if I'm a sixth grader and I want to go use the craft area for an activity.
So we won't necessarily interrogate, but, you know, it's, it is obvious that, you know, we have fit sixth graders in there, like it is a teen space, you know. And we have hundreds of hundred teens coming over from our school every day to use the library and the spaces is for them. To have the space now occupy the non-teens. Sends a different message.
Sounds like we have the teen areas of the children's reputation. Because right now, the children's policy is currently, I believe, but up to age 10, it's about this one, the seventh grade and up. Yeah, it's like, where are the tweens go? Regular space where some of our seniors, such as, may not want them.
Yeah.
Children's space, yeah.
The children's room policy, you know, we don't have one. So the one that's being created, you'll see, complements this one to show that there's a space in library for everybody. But phase two would be critical to have us focus as much on fourth, fifth, and sixth graders as we do preschoolers. You know, a lot of libraries have super success with storytimes. And as you, as you know, you know, the real work is to make sure we're addressing this specifically. It's a fourth, fifth, and sixth graders.
Questions about the times that it's open and some of the wording in there that sounds contradictory. Okay, so it says, "The team rooms open during library hours after school and on weekends." Patrons of all ages may actively browse the collection in the team. But if it's only open after school and on weekends, and people cannot then browse during non-times. I'd also like to point out that there are some people in this age group, 16 and above, whom, you know, you don't necessarily have to be in school. And so might, you know, either A have a period too often at high school, so that they might want to come down near those things at high school. Or they're not in school at all, because they don't have to be. And so is that room not available for them to use at 11 o'clock on a Tuesday?
It is. So then, yeah, but we don't want to put exceptions in there. So the room is open when it's not open. So if somebody wants to be to actively browse the collection, we'll let them in to actively browse.
What about like, what about sixteen-year-olds who's not at school?
Yes, yeah, if a homeschooler comes in and says, you know, I'd like to study in the team, we would let them in.
But then it doesn't become an ask, somebody that can go to ask.
Yes.
Because.
Because the doors will unlock at 2:00 or 2:30.
So the doors are locked. Because, so right, the doors are locked, so like I, as a patron, I want to go browse YA books for my children during a weekday.
Just come to a reference separate and they'll let you go.
That doesn't strike me as very, as a very.
Yeah, I'm not loving that idea of blocking the doors, because, you know, anybody who might want to say, for example, I often like to check in on what's happening in the world of graphic lit. And that, I presume, is going to be largely in the teen space. I mean, and there's, I, the idea of having a big section of the library locked feels a little unfriendly to me and to adults.
Operationally, you know, what we've seen in the, the current team room is adults playing card games, mahjong, taking over the space, and everyday staff having to tell them, you know, it's 2:30, let's exit the space. So, you know, this allows us to create a teen-only space. You know, adults aren't welcome to be in the space unless they're actively browsing the collection.
I think that, that makes a lot of sense. But maybe, I don't know, in my mind, you know, we're dedicating a pretty big part of the library to this. I, having that space locked seems like it could create some blowback, especially during periods where, you know, during the summer. And I know the kids and their parents can ask the reference librarians to open it up. But just the concept of that, that space being locked, is there any way to revisit how that could work operationally while still, you know, ensuring that it's kind of used for its core purpose?
Maybe it's locked a half an hour, an hour, two o'clock, so that people can, rather than having it locked the whole day. I don't know if that would be more helpful. Or it's just an idea I brought up out of the top of my head. Because I, I hear that there is a logistical problem with keeping it separate. And it's creating extra work for librarians to have to clear out people. Something that signs and other ways won't work. Maybe there's like a timed notification or something where it can be figured out prior to opening the team. Such that it's less onerous for library staff while still being open for more time for other people. I don't know, I, I.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the hard part of this is, yeah, opening a space for all patrons to use and clearing them out and then them understanding that after school and on the weekends and the evenings, they're not allowed to be there. And then just created some confusion about what the previous spaces for.
More that it was just unlocked and not necessarily like.
But if it's unlocked, people are just going to go in there, adults.
What we were trying to do as a group, when we were discussing this, the, the synthesis of it, a lot of it was just to make sure that this was a place for teenagers, but adults were allowed to browse but not stay. So everybody was allowed to go through. And it was something, and we talked about this, because I think in the meeting, I said, you know, the trustees are going to ask this question so that I could see it coming. But the, the best part about it is like, it's dedicated for the teenagers. But at the same time, older patrons can walk through, look and browse what's there. If there's a parent looking for something for maybe a sick child or a homeschooled child, they can still go in, but they cannot stay. This was that part of that. And I think any, I think everybody's open to input or how they, or their feelings about it, it's important. But the number one thing, the core part of it was that creating that safe, secure space for teenagers. And that even encompass, I think we discussed stuff about even with tutors and stuff, because you wouldn't want somebody coming in, just like the, the study rooms. Like people can buy to come in, they're locked, but they can come in. But the thing is that the study room is different from just being able to come in and sit down in this room.
But, but there's fundamental difference between a study room, which doesn't have anything in it that other patrons might want, and area of the library where people might want to browse YA or graphic novels. And part of the way the system is set up here at this library is, well, it's nice to interact with the staff and. You don't have to, like, that's, like, there's a lot, a lot of options where people might not want to interact with the staff. They might want to just, I don't know, they're embarrassed that they like reading YA graphic novels. You know, or they don't want to have to go to the library and say, hey, can you let me in here so I can look at the YA graphic novels?
We're going towards CBS push for service. Because CBS push for service got.
Can't fire shampoo with the.
Blackened up the mission.
Because part of browsing is that you can wander the shelves and see, hey, this looks interesting. And if we're locked behind locked doors, some of, some of the collection, what, I mean, however you decide what collection it is, I think that takes away from the fundamental openness of the library. And I definitely understand the concern as to not wanting, I know the old biddies to play mahjong, I get that. But I don't know, I, I, I'm not smart enough right now to come off the top of my head how that can be operational.
And is this what other libraries are doing?
Yeah, most public libraries, teen rooms are teen rooms.
But do they have, like, parts of the collection locked up, like, in those areas as well?
Those libraries that have teen rooms, some libraries have teen spaces, which, certain spaces.
Yeah.
But ones that have rooms are just for teens. So whether they're locked or not, adults aren't welcome in those spaces unless they're browsing the collection. You know, and I think the concern that we have about ways, you know, a minor inconvenience for adult agents who could place holds for. Minor inconvenience for adult patrons who could place holds or, you know, simply ask a reference librarian to. Go into the team room to browse privately. I think, you know, go ahead, Kay.
Yeah, so in all the years, many years that we've been discussing this project, this is very, the first time I've ever. Heard that it might be a locked space, so I'm very reluctant to move in that direction. It's a very large part of the main floor of the library. A lot of people are accustomed to being able to use it and or at least to go into it. So, you know, I would have a hard time agreeing to a locked space.
I agree with Rob that we need to find ways that ensure that this. Is is sacrosanct as a teen space, because yes, they they need to feel like it's theirs. And if they feel like anyone is, you know, running in there and, you know, sitting in the space, whatever. Then that's gonna really be a turn off to that, to that space and I, I've seen many of the teen spaces in other libraries. And even when they're not locked, it's very clear that I am not welcome to go and sit in there, right? And I think that that's important to project. I agree with Kay that. It, on on two points, one that I think we're all feeling a little defensive because we're hearing about this now. After going through key years of work on this to be like, oh, it's gonna be locked. So that's surprising is I think making us feel a little defensive defensive about it. And two. I'm also struggling with the idea that we would have a significant space that would be locked for twenty-five hours. Of, out of seventy-eight total hours per week that the library is open. That seems like a. A large chunk of time and a large chunk of space that would be locked and feels a little against. You know, the the free public library on the outside tidling. So I'm, I'm open to the idea of trialing a locked room. But I'm also wondering. Whether or not there's other options. You know, one thing that that occurs to me is that, you know, the old teen room. I can kind of see why other people would go in there because signage notwithstanding, it didn't really jump out at you as a team room. Right, it was, it was kind of attached to the rest of the library, wasn't. You know, there there was a door, but it it didn't seem like you were really entering a totally different area. It, to my mind at least. This new space is partially because of its wonderful design, it's gonna hit you. It's gonna smack you across the face as soon as you walk through that threshold that this is a teen area. Much as if you walk into the children's area, it's it's very apparent that this is an area for children. I wonder if that's, and then part of it, we we won't know what it, how it's gonna work out until this actually opens up, but. It might be worth seeing how this works in practice before we adopt a policy that. That sets certain hours or that kind of codifies this. But I agree that it it is an important goal to make this area reserved for teens. And to make sure that any other use is limited to just browsing. But how we accomplish that, I wonder if if this is the right time to really kind of set those hard limits. Before we've seen how it works in practice.
That's, that's a good. Yeah, because what the potential is, what would be the blowback on our next phase? How would people perceive that? Because Mike, as a trustee, but also just as a patron, former patron. Still a patron of the library. The children get the benefit, but the adults have to pay for it. So there might be somebody who feels a certain kind of way, but why should I support something that I can't use? So it's, it's a real fine line. What you were saying, Rob, was. Was correct not to. Make something so ingrained or in stone. But I do understand the necessity to have a place that's safe, but is there a way to make a place safe where it's still open? That's. That would be the thing we have to kick around and maybe do a trial run like you were alluding to. See how that goes.
And I think part of the point could be, and I agree with all the points that, you know, where you have the extra sound that. He said, or that could, we we don't have full-time teen librarians, right? We have tried to, but it wasn't included, right? Additional teen person.
Right, Erin is a reference teen librarian, so she's part-time.
Right.
Referencing part-time teen librarian.
But we don't have the resources to post someone there who can. Allow it to be open and browsable and and stop people from staying in there. So I I think it's sort of balancing all of these, which is a hard balance, I understand, and it sounds to me like more time. For this, but you know, I think that's, that's part of it too, and I can understand the point that it could be. Potentially a small percentage of adults who maybe against, might not want, I don't love to go and ask for help. I guess someone coming up, I'll be honest, but I I can see. Weighing that against the other, I think it's just hard to sort of do it in the abstract, like we thought, without it. Without seeing it and without it there and understanding that. Change is coming and it's going to be a change and. Our, our time to change, but you know, when we see it and it's just here. Have a different effect on patrons way in a positive way, but I think all of these points are.
This, just a off the top of my head, operational, operational idea. There's two doors into the space, right, if I'm all correctly. Is, if you're concerned about people not being able to go in and out, like, or not using the space. Is there a possibility to lock one door and stick a reference librarian desk in, like, by the other, like, across where the librarians are now? Stick a desk there instead, have someone sit there and if you wanna go and browse, they're unlocked, but they can say that, you know, please browse, but don't use the space. And I'm, I'm throwing it out there, it's like. The part of the issue frankly is just the, going over to the desk across where it is across the way. They might be helping somebody else, they might be not there at the moment, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm stickballing here, yeah, so.
Pivot.
Yeah, and again, these are not things you decide right now.
So the the children's department. Adults without children. Aren't allowed to actually browse in the collection. The difference there is we have a full staff of children's. Employees, librarians, who, you know, the the space is open and we approach all. Adults who come in who seem not to be actively browsing to see if we can help them. You know, we don't have teen librarians to seventy-eight hours to keep. You know, and the part-time teen librarian that would be sitting at February twenty-seven. Is geared towards those hours when we have the most teens in the building. So another consideration would be, is is it the best use of a staff dedicated to teen services to. Be in the space from nine to two in the morning. You know, but. It's an interesting idea to. Pause the policy. That, that you had to see. How it works, I think this, this, I I. Expected this conversation because I don't think the community at large is going to. Expect the investment of three million dollars and all of this work and construction. To lock in and, you know, pull on the door and it's locked. Be a lot of confusion. By that, even if for the entire month of, months of March and April, we have lots of open houses that show off this fantastic space. It's still going to be.
I think there may be some things that currently now people are in there playing and have to be cleared out. Again, it may not hang it out as we go forward and. Differences, yes, will be more open, nicely attractive. Empty, that we want to use it, but. People who are using it during the day.
One last thing is that I, I did recently visit Brookline where they do have a nice big teen room. And I went during the day when the kids are, you know, the teens are in in school. It was not locked, I could walk in, walk around, there, there wasn't a staff person in it. But the library, you know, is open and free and you can wander at your will. And I wonder, in our case, isn't, this is a glassed-in room, right? So staff who's outside the room would be able to see into the room, right? Isn't that the way it's being designed?
It was a, a glass wall on the, the wall parallel to the staircase. Other wall has a higher wall for the glass, continues up to the ceiling. And but the two glass doors provide also sight into the space. You know, although there. May not have been a staff in the Brooklyn teen room. Perhaps if you, you sat down and started to spend some time there, you may have been approached and asked to, you know. Ask if you, if you could be helped by a librarian, you know, and that's. That's the concern, not so much, you know, people going in and taking a look around or browsing the collection, it's. Those patrons who. Lose space for studying or reading.
Can we use high school students for community service on free periods to sit there and please?
I wouldn't wanna do that, so.
Come and do their homework and then if people walk in, well, they might not believe them, but. Somehow deputize them and say, you were not allowed.
But, but it goes beyond just, like, the, the active times really are two thirty to nine. And I have, like, I wouldn't wanna think of a place where. Put a lot of your, your own resources and the town's resources in, being somewhat not accessible to you as a patron. But the other part of it is, is just. Like we've been trying to wrestle with this, just kind of. Try it, do a trial and error, but I I I agree with what Kay was saying, it's like. This, this library is something special, everybody comes in has nothing but wonderful things to say. And to. Be short-sighted in some respect as a board or just as a, as a whole body and not just kind of. There's not gonna be an easy solution, but there is one and we need time to work that out. I think that's what, as I, I think that's what I'm hearing from other board members, it's. We wanna be able to be everything we can be to everyone, we're not gonna please everyone. But. I, I would kind of push it more towards. Like allowing people just to walk through there, if they're not there, there's no teenagers in there, it's fine. I know what we were discussing was about, this is kind of new to me, but we had discussed about the. Tutors and stuff like that, that was more of a thing of who was gonna be able to stay. So there's a lot of dynamics and a lot of balls in the air and it's just really making sure we make. A very informed and thoughtful. Policy for that, so, you know, we don't shoot ourselves in the foot in the long term. So that's something. Hearing everybody and hearing everything causes me to pause with certain things there too, so it's, it's like. Maybe we need to have like a, a dry run or somehow figure this out. Because this project is moving forward and this is like, like most of us are finding out that it would be, I didn't know it was gonna be locked. So that creates something. It's a, it's like a barrier that's never been here, that's not what this place is about, it's always been very.
And if there's something that, you know, we can advocate for, I mean, thi- this definitely isn't, there's no easy solution, it's a very real concern. With the safety, especially within an area that's dedicated to teens. So there's perhaps not an easy solution, but. You know. Certainly, the next library that I walk into, I'll, I'll, I'll be keeping an eye out for, it'll be interesting to see what, what peer libraries do. In that scenario and if there's anything to advocate for, whether it's increased staffing. Whether it's a better security camera system in that area that, that is easier to monitor, so you don't need somebody stationed right outside. You know, that's something that we might be able to do. That, that's not a short-term fix, but. I do, I do wanna recognize that it's a very serious concern that this is trying to address. I didn't, I didn't see it so much in the safety. As the, as the biggest problem, I was, I. I, I think my concern, I'm curious if this is what I'm just trying to get at with this. Is that it's mostly about do the teams trust that this is their space? Right? And that's what's tricky about this is, you know, when this opens. You want them to feel like it's their space. And if they lose the trust in the library. That this is going to be reserved as their space, that's gonna be harder and their trust. Right? As we debut this space, and that would be my biggest concern, right? Cause ideally, we would, we would have a period where we would be trying different policies about how people use that space. You know, like we can open different, you know, levels of assignments, different levels of, of staffing, kind of making. Walks through the space, what, whatever. But it's that, that same critical time where we want teams to really feel like that sense of ownership. You know, that it could be a big problem if all of a sudden, you know, like it turns into the Bajong or something. At that space, you know, right, as we're trying to build that trust and that sense of ownership that the team says when we open it. And so I think it is, it's a tricky issue, and so I, I, I feel like that's, that to me is the, is, is the crux. But I would. I would love to hear what the director thinks, my, my interpretation.
No, absolutely, this is unusual because the space the teens occupy currently. Is used by everyone.
Is used there.
But from nine to two thirty, and we are taking over thirty-two hundred square feet. That everybody uses. On seven-eight hours for exclusive use by teens. Yeah, so this is gonna be a learning curve if this moves forward. You know, but I, I think it's necessary for reasons you talked about that, you know, this. Doesn't have the smell of an adult space, you know, that this is, you know. A, a, a space where teens are always welcome and can create and feel safe and. Do what they need to do, study or socialize, game, rap, to play, you know. Seeing a Smithsonian magazine, playing a rap from the morning or some addition to. The crafts that they've put up on the wall or something like this. So I, I think this is a big. Change for, you know. I think. I think it is necessary, but I understand this is gonna be quite shocking. I think part of what, why the phases are so important that we maintain momentum, that phase four. I would like to see expanded beyond, you know, moving the reference desk to a more central location and redoing that space to creating. You know, even a more vibrant, exciting space. Of the non-stack section of the second floor for adults, you know, that rises up to level of what we're gonna see with the, the team room. Already going to be relocating as much furniture we can outside of the footprint of the new team room to make sure. Already going to be relocating as much furniture we can outside of the footprint of the new teen room to make sure we have. A similar amount of tables and chairs available, but, you know, Facebook can't come soon enough. Because. The rest of that floor is going to look. The old and average and I'm inviting a comparison to next March, but the teenager.
Right, someone wants to use the study room in their. Nice teen space and. That seems like a point, which is just much interesting.
Right.
I I completely understand the complexity of it and there's a lot of really good points raised here.
And, you know, not to. Park at a turn, but these floors are coming for a number of years, but there's something we could do in the interim. You know, study pods that are in libraries that, you know. Just install it.
The study is open during the day in our.
The junior room?
Yeah.
If if this room, like. Yeah, if the teen room is closed during the day, if this room was available, it may have been like a shun or something. I I am not sure if that's possible at all, just.
Yeah. In furniture locations, there are spaces available for that. Upstairs, you know, or or here on the.
Wondering if we can offer something that's something to offset the clothes. But I think it's sort of what you were kind of starting to talk about with the baseball stuff that's coming out of the vibrant areas, but. So we get there and move.
One, one of the things that we will be doing, relocate the furniture the next few weeks, September segment. Is to consolidate the public computers to three of the rows of seating. So we can move closer to the staircase to be seated. Study carrel yelling for just people who want to sit down and study. Don't have that much technology to bring that needs to expand across all four of those roads and tables.
I think the the good news is we weren't going to vote on this today, but also we don't have to vote on a team rep policy for some months.
Right, and it gives us time to work on.
I do want to very minor like, which I don't think can change the policy in any way. But that I want to bring up as part of my two things, but obviously my one thing, part of the discussion. Uh, very last sentence is the use of the team space is reserved for teams. Um, I think there should be a, with exceptions granted, the discretion of director or something along those lines, just in case it was used for something else. I think all of our policies have some sort of, with exceptions granted by the director, I think this one should do.
I also had one small edit that we had discussed in our meeting, which I forgot to make here on this. In the second sentence, it is a safe space for reading, studying, socializing, gaming and attending programs. But I read it during the meeting. I thought gambling, so we decided to delete the word gaming. Because socializing and attending programs sort of covered the video game aspect. So that people don't think that keynote or something. That was just once more revision I put up to me.
You know, what 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 initially was in the meeting, it was, I just remember the first. There was like an asterisk in it. I put here, is this a dedicated space? And then it's, we had three bullets. What is, what is the space? Who is it for? When will it open? I think that's what we were working on, so it wasn't necessarily. Yeah, it's. I think with. What you're talking about with having that caveat there at the end, at the discretion is a good idea. Think we, yeah, it's kind of funny. We had a lot of conversation about the word gaming, so.
So maybe would it make sense to revisit this at a future meeting? In the meantime, we can think about.
Yeah, and if it helps, we can. Work forward with working on the internal procedures as well as, you know, in early September when schools back in session have our. Talk to team votes, you know, what they presume rules are for their team room. Bring those into this conversation.
Yeah, it'd certainly be good to get get the team feedback on, you know, what they want the the space to be used. And I I think the good thing is that it it seems like we're generally aligned on the 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 end goal here. It's just a matter of how to achieve that and how much should the policy prescribe that rather than either leave it to discretion. Or have it as as more of a a separate set of guidelines that hit a wall sort of time.
If I may, one of the FY twenty six action plan items is staffing analysis, which will be key for us to think through this to see in the reference department. What are our staffing levels now and. What are the opportunities to staff this new space?
All right, any further discussion on the teamwork policy? All right, well, thank you for the draft. We'll revisit that at a future meeting. Moving on to old business. The first action item is to approve the trustee report on the twenty twenty five action plan. Understanding is that it's the same action plan that we used at the July meeting with the addition of some very helpful statistics at the end. I'll turn it over to Rob to discuss those.
I just want to talk about a couple of things on page seventeen, which is fiscal year data. So as you can see, it did very healthy circulation, seven percent increase. It's really, really good. And you can see a lot of that is attributable to digital checkouts and that's broken down. Down below. The digital video was up forty four percent, digital audio thirty three percent. That's that's who. And that's the commitment we made to invest more money in hoopla in FY twenty five. So you can see that impact on the digital checkouts. The problem there is it's insatiable. So, you know, for FY twenty six, a year from now, you probably see more of a flat line. Because we can't be spending a lot more than the thirty six thousand dollars that we allocated to hoopla. We just don't have the money. So we'll be looking to implement some. Strategies to control that spending. So, you know, it's positive, but we just. Don't have more money to throw at the budget, which is a cost per checkout model. Another really interesting thing is. The new library card registrations are down about nineteen percent. You know, not too alarming. I think that just means we probably did a really good job in FY twenty four. But I think in the springtime, we're going to see a lot more interest, more card registrations, more of the teen room. So we're really excited about seeing that number rebound.
How does the number flat? It's with me on my.
Right, maybe basically that asked.
Okay, do they go, do they expire? I mean, I don't know, I said expired one.
They do expire. They're pretty good.
Yeah.
Reproved and not proved, but.
Yeah, yeah, but I know I did that.
Five years of non-use was purged from the system. But, yeah, we did double check with Minute Man on this sixteen thousand seven seventy seven, and they double checked and it is sixteen thousand seven seventy seven.
Again, we should play the lottery.
Yeah.
No, all numbers are random. Like every number is like just as likely as every other.
I think it reflects a lot of good work by you and and staff as well, particularly.
Oh, it's, it's on the staff. The study room use number I wanted your attention to because last July first of last year. We put the study room reservation system into assetment. So you can see that's really paid off with a fifty six percent increase in the use of the study rooms. Which has also saved our staff a lot of time before it was, you know, call or talk to our staff. Made for you. So that's really exciting and we're looking forward to this this year room. Get to assetment to continue that staff efficiency and greater access by committing to space resources.
I was just really enthusiastic that not only did we have a record year, but the growth was really across, I mean, digital really drove it. But there was proven physical circulation too, which is is really nice to see. What is the community room use counting?
It is counting reservations of this space for meetings or.
Outside of library programming.
Yes.
So like this meeting.
You're a bad man.
You're like a. Oh, because we're not technically a library. There's more reservations than there are days in a year. Yes. But I think that's, but that's, but that doesn't include library programs. I'll double check. But I think.
What do you mean by that?
Like if the if the children's department brings in somebody for an event. Does that count as a community review user? Is that only counted as a library program?
Right, within the library program. But I'll confirm with Dan, she's on.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand, but.
I I think you have to rewrite that includes a lot, because there's no way, like if you don't include any of the library program, there's no way this room is used on average. Two plus times a day for non-librarian use.
Well, this morning was used and this evening is used.
Right, no, I I just want to know because because the categories are distinct, right? Because the category for computer, community room use is under patron use of library. Which would suggest that it's the patrons who were reserving this for a meeting, right? As opposed to programs, which would be things that be put on. Right? And so we'll be counting those programs.
So what you're asking is there, what you're asking is that there are four hundred and sixty six uses on top of the seven hundred and nine.
Because I wouldn't consider that a patron use of, I mean, patrons might be attending that program, but it wouldn't be a use of the community.
Right.
Or reservation.
Right, and these are numbers that we report to the state and the ARIS, which I'll be sending to trustees tomorrow. Rob just signed the sheet yesterday. So when we report on the ARIS, the community meeting room use excludes library use, programs or events.
Right.
So that number should be this number. The seven hundred and ninety lots of children's programs or team programs aren't part of this room. Oh, one. Yes, I think that's, that's it. So thanks to Diana for putting this together.
Thank you, Diana. We do have this up for a vote. Is there any further discussion? Before we go to a motion. All right, in that case, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty five review?
I move to adopt this as our twenty twenty, this week or twenty twenty five, she's planning a review. And send it to select board of other.
I'm town manager.
Great. Um, I'll do a roll call votes. Kay?
Hi.
Hi, Michael, hi. Megan?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
And myself, I. Right. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, we have the trustee onboarding documents. This is just a discussion item for the current draft.
To lose a revision from the last meeting that has been made here. And we are working on the footnotes that were suggested. They haven't been made yet because a lot of them. So the final onboarding document will have the full complete. Footnotes, but we made all of the edits that were shared. Including the change to the introduction that Kay offered and then all of the track changes are represented here in this document. So we'll continue to finish up the footnotes.
Thank you, Rob. Any any discussion on this draft?
I think this is a great document. I'm very happy to that Rob and Diane put it together and whoever else contributed, thank you.
There's some other committees and related positions on page three for the art committee. It just says, sir, as the chair of the art committee. This is not a subsection of a particular position. Um, so I think we need to specify may serve as the chair of the art committee. For any.
All the other ones say maybe, so.
Right, but I think that's for any trustee, maybe the art committee chair, right? It doesn't have to be the. The chair, vice chair, the secretary is the chair.
Well, I think what we're missing here is the actual position. It would be art committee chair. It would be library foundation of need of liaison, friends of need of library liaison.
Well, these are like.
Here it is, as it mean.
Yeah, it may serve as support doesn't mean on the library foundation. May serve as support liaison. Friends.
I think.
You may serve as support, just we just.
I think what it just needs is in the sub-bulqueness, it says committees and related positions. I think you just need a may serve as. More following in. Various committees and which, because the previous one says may serve as an officer, chair, vice chair, secretary. So if you just, if you if you parallel that.
May 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 serve.
May serve committee, right, as as what Armer was just saying.
Right, it's on stick, making about committees and the secretaries or a decision for get that.
And is there only one trustee on the art committee who is the chair? Okay, so then I think we're just saying, you know.
But I believe the. Bylaws say that the trustee designated for the art committee serves as chair.
Right, yeah.
So then I think it's right, may serve as support designated as the chair.
Right.
It's just missing, it's not as.
Complete.
As the other.
Yeah, so this is one of the edits, because before it said may serve as the trustee's liaison to the art committee. And I think the edit from Kay was to change that to his chair, because they're not just a liaison. Whoever is the designate becomes the chair of the art committee.
Got it.
So I can change that to.
But I think this is just missing.
The trustee liaison serves as the chair.
That now, and and the point is just that it's.
It needs to be.
And may serve as the chair of the art.
No, no, I think I think the may needs to go in the higher sub-bullock.
I don't think it has to.
Okay, I think it should, yeah.
What if he said one trustee serves as the chair of the art committee?
Yeah.
Right. Because it's not a liaison position. It is a subcommittee of the trustees and the trustee. Sirs is the chair.
Yeah, and I think making it specific that's one trustee would work well, it's that's a difference.
Right, um, any other discussion on the onboarding documents? All right, moving right along. On a related topic, we'll move to the art and exhibits committee. I'll turn it over to Kay for that.
Yes, thank you. So we don't have anything to vote on tonight, so it's, we ju- we did just meet. Yes, thank you, so we don't have anything to vote on tonight, so it's, um, we ju, we did just meet, um, our current artists on the wall, who is the last for several six months or so, uh, is Zana Procolis with her watercolors. Beautifully, beautiful, exquisite watercolors. In our cases, we have Barbara Levitoff doing, um, with her largely Raku pottery. Um, starting, so, starting September, we have nothing on the wall, the committee is encouraging, um, the placement, Gay, for example, suggested possibly putting up, uh, posters, art, um, uh, book cover posters or in some way, or, or putting the, um, the, the diagrams of the new, um, of the construction could be, uh, use of the wall to have, perhaps to have some kind of, something that's of interest on the wall that can't, you know, isn't going to be damaged. Not like original artwork could be damaged. So, uh, and then we, we are going to continue to keep the cases open for the next several months. We're exploring a variety of possibilities, a terrarium artist, a mosaic artist, a jewelry maker who uses old computer pieces. So we're looking into these different artists to, uh, you know, keep, keep art on the table during construction. And that's all for tonight.
Right, thank you very much, Kay.
If anybody has questions or thoughts, um, you know, please say.
All right, um, so, th- thank you, Kay, we'll move on next to the MacIver series and update from Michael.
Uh, everything is moving forward. Actually, it's just kind of good that, uh, if there are dates, I think, uh, I had Kay send out a notice just to, like, alert the, uh, trustees that these are the days that the, I think you had asked me that, somebody had asked me, could we get an idea of, might have been Jay. So, um, what days these things were taking place? So that's about the only thing, it's October twenty-sixth, November ninth, and November sixteenth are the days, uh, for, uh, the scheduled MacIver series stuff. So everything is already in place, now it's just waiting for that time for it to happen. So, we're in a good place.
Great, I can't wait to, I can't wait to attend.
Oh, my God, I, I would, I would definitely tell people to try to come to, I, I, I called it a little something for everyone, because we have a Reiki master who's coming in to do things and, uh, speak on related issues with stress. Then there the I, it's, well, the reason why I asked, uh, the Reynolds Brothers to come is because we're going to be, uh, moving towards our second phase. We're doing stuff for the children better than to New England and World renowned, uh, children, book authors come here and it just substantiates what we're really trying to be about. And then the last person is a, a dear friend, Jimmy Myers, who's like a sports icon. And it's, it's like I said, a little something for everyone, so it's good. I just can't wait for it to happen, so I'll be done. But, uh, I'm, I'm happy that, uh, that we, we've got these people coming in and I think there should be some dynamic things going on and, uh, helpful things for our library.
Great. Thank you, um. Uh, next to the friends update, uh, since Jade is not here tonight, does anybody have any updates on the friends? Okay, uh, in that case, we'll move on to the elephant, uh, the next scheduled, uh, meeting will be September of the library foundation. They, they, they don't have any meetings starting for the summer, July, August, uh, so I'll report on next one. Sounds good. Uh, and that brings us, um, exactly on time, according to the agenda, to trustee comments. Oh.
I have one.
Oh, just quick, I'm not a trustee, but I just wanted to let you know, I did reach out to Katie King to invite her to, uh, the September meeting. She's not able to, but she is able to join, she sees after December. So she'll be here December night. Because, you know, the select board meets on the same evening.
Yeah.
And she is happy and excited to be here. She also will be joining us for our staff development day in September nineteenth.
A break.
That's the better meeting in November, two weeks, correct?
Yes.
I have my calendar.
Thank you. And, uh, Kay?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I did attend the American Library Association trustee day. And I don't know if anybody else was, uh, in attendance, but, um, it was really very fascinating. They had a bunch of good, good speakers and I, I would really encourage people to, when these things come around, the American Library Association or the, um, Massachusetts Library MLBC, uh, Board of Commissioners. Um, they, there really were some interesting, and just a very few short highlights. The, one of the speakers, they had one speaker who was a trustee who had, had been for thirty years and she was saying how mu, how important it is during meetings to stay on, you know, know your mission and stay focused on it and try not to, um, stray into, um, to, uh, into day-to-day, uh, operations things, uh, stay on, um, and end on time. She, she says, work with the, the trustees and the director should build a trusting and collaborative relationship. Uh, she strongly recommended, one thing that I think may be a good idea for us to have is the annual tickle, ticker, tickler list of the things that, our calendar, what comes up at what time each year and have everybody have a copy of that calendar so that we, um, know, uh, look, know what we're, is coming up in our next few meetings. Um, she encouraged the chair to really try to draw out the other, uh, members of the boards to make sure everybody gets heard. Um, she suggested, uh, uh, that they, all trustees try to be very visible at the library. Attend vent, events, come into the library, talk with staff, not about policy or operations, but just to get to know staff. Uh, the trustee should be seen and make a positive, uh, have a positive presence and be known in their library. And that's, that was just some highlights that I wanted to pass on.
Perfect, thank you for sharing, Kay.
Yep.
And for trustee comments, you know, I, I just wanted to say, I'm really, really excited for the construction project. Um, and for Rob and Diane and the staff, uh, thanks to everybody for everything that they've done so far. I know that we're kind of on the precipice of everything happening and there's a lot going on, but we're, we're excited.
I think it's like one of those things, we, uh, we're anxious to see this, like, coming in the other day and it was over the weekend. The, all the stacks were there, they just come in and now they're gone, which is kind of kicked in, this is really happening. So I'm excited and I'm excited for all the hard work. As myself being a longer, a newer, but been here for a while to see everything that everybody before me had been working on, coming to fruition is a real good feel. And I just think that says a lot about the trustees as well as the library director and staff. Once you got here, it solidified it and just made everything go even better. So thank all of you. Looking forward to this now.
Any further comments? Have a motion to adjourn? So do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No more.
Oh, great, uh, we'll roll call that, uh, Michael?
Yes.
Kay?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Megan?
Hi.
And myself, I. All right, thanks, everybody.